We're going to go ahead and get started with our FY26 budget review for the Sheriff's Office. Today's date is June 10th, 2025. The time is 11:02 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline Duncan and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. Let's go to our one and only business item, the FY26 budget review with our Sheriff's Office. And Sheriff Norris.
Good morning Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, members of the public. We're going to present today a review of our budget, which certainly reflects the growth in Cootney County. It is absolutely a reflection of the growth that we've had from the mere 138,000 people in 2010 to close to 188,000 today. Calls for service that has occurred within that period of time have doubled. Our mental health and welfare calls for service have increased 20%. And we are certainly a reflection, not only in our jail, but as calls for service are concerned, certainly those take up a lot of our calls. And protocols have changed from 2010 on how we handle many of these mental health calls for service. And the waiting time that occurs at Cootney Health on these calls for service. Drug overdoses, a mere 24 in 2010 to 73 in 2024. 22 in 2010 and 73. An overdose doesn't mean that it's a fatal event. Somebody that overdoses is still an overdose whether they survive or not. We'd also like to bring to the Board's attention some accounting situations that have occurred with our SROs, School Resource Officers, that we were not backfilled at the time. So we'd like to bring that to your attention. And also have a conversation on not only the Sheriff's Office, but our workforce in general. In 2018, this is an example where you see the grayed area or any other color there. That represents people who are off on FMLA or other event. To 2024, much more grayed area or any other color for that matter. So, these are the things that we'd like to address in our budget. And without any further delay, Stephanie Dravny is our Budget Director. It's all yours.
Good morning, Stephanie Dravny for the Cootney County Sheriff's Office. I'm going to be doing a brief overview. I just want to make note that the Sheriff's Office has over 30 budgets that we account for, and that would take way too long to go over. So we're just going to kind of summarize and do any A budget, B budget increases, our capital ask, and then our five-year plan. If you need to stop, just let me know. We're going to start with our A budget, and it's Patrol, new, four new deputies, which is a total of $5,7,076. These four positions are the backfill positions that have been pulled to fulfill SRO positions within the county. This will also allow Patrol to separate out the traffic units from deployment so that they can focus on traffic education and enforcement, as well as follow up on crash investigations without being needed for calls for service on a daily basis. Additionally, we would like to resurrect our District Deputy Programs for District 4 and 5 and provide more intentional policing to those areas. For Patrol, we want to ask for a new Hayden Lieutenant, which is $171,000. City of Hayden is requesting a full-time lieutenant as a liaison. This would be contingent upon the contract, of course.
Real quick, contingent upon what part of the contract?
Does anyone, you guys want me to speak?
Yeah, so they've, there's some weeds in there that they're not paying for a School Resource Officer anymore. So they would like to use some of that money towards the School Resource Officer, I'm sorry, towards a Lieutenant. The Mayor and City Manager believe that a Lieutenant is necessary to be able to prepare the necessary arguments and reports for their counsel, for them to realize that they are far from being a sufficient city with the amount of law enforcement officers that they currently have.
So, does the contract pay for all this?
There is a shortage.
I think what they've done is they've taken some capital that they used last year and they've put it towards salaries. So, to Sheriff's point, there are some details that still need to be fine-tuned there to make sure it's more equitable going forward.
Yeah, well, I think the big issue is that, you know, that they really aren't paying for all the services that we're giving them right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so we're giving them more without them paying more to cover that. And so I'd like to look into that a lot more closely because...
There's a team of us.
Well, that's fine, but as long as that's something that comes before the Board, because, you know, they keep asking for more, but, you know, what about our annual steps? What about all these other things? Those need to be built into the contract. We shouldn't have to be going every year saying we need more without these automatic build-ins, knowing that that's what we've agreed to. Otherwise, it just becomes another subsidy for another city that's, you know, drawing law enforcement resources that the other parts of the county are paying for. So, go ahead. That was my only question.
Next for our admin budget, we are going, or we are reclassing our purchasing agent to a grade six. This is based upon the update, her updated job description, which is $4,961. We are asking for longevity pay, lowering our Patrol Matrix threshold, and to include our captains. So right now, just to kind of clarify that, right now on the Patrol Matrix at 15, 20, and 25, they get a 3%, 4%, 5% increase. And we want to lower that to 10, 15, and 20 to get those increases quicker, and then to also include the captains that are not on the matrix, longevity matrix, right now. Next, we want to ask for a Communications Coordinator, which is $89,000. This position will help better the relationship between KCSO and the public with all communication outlets, as well as maintain relations with the media. We are asking for an Interpreter Stipend of $1 per hour for 10 deputies, who are a total of $25,892. This stipend is to compensate those Sheriff employees who are bilingual and use this ability on a daily basis to perform their duties and assist others in serving our community. We're asking for a new Recruiting Sergeant, $132,000. And KCSO is requesting an Operations Sergeant position assigned to Agency Recruiting. We're asking for two deputy, or two detectives at 121,000 apiece, for a total of $242,000. One is an ICAC detective, which will investigate internet crimes against children, and the other one is an SIU detective, bringing our SIU department to a total of four due to ever-increasing drug crimes and overdose investigations. We're asking for a Sex Offender Registry Specialist for $71,000. This position will make the jail more efficient and effective. This employee will be working with the current Registered Sex Offender Specialist, as well as covering the jail lobby window, making it easier to hire specifically for these positions, as well as provide constant coverage for both vital positions. In maintenance, we're asking for two Senior Maintenance Operators for $86,000 apiece. The department has been understaffed, and it's very difficult to fill these positions. We're in need of additional staff, not only to maintain our current responsibilities, but also the addition of KC North. Those are all our A budget requests. I just want to make note for our B budgets. The departments that decreased is our Auto Shop, our OEM Department, 911, 911 Enhanced, Animal Control, Driver's License, Volunteer Search and Rescue, Jail Commissary, our Rec Safety budget. And I do want to make note that this year we did develop our county-funded Rec Safety budget. Normally, Rec Safety was covered by Snowmobile fees, but we just don't have enough of revenue to cover the expenses. So we went ahead and divvied that out to have a county-operated Rec Safety Fund for Snowmobile. So then moving, B budgets that stayed flat would have been OHB and K9. And then moving on to our B budget increases, Civil increased $10,000 due to non-capital requests for asking for three vehicles to be wrapped and get new bills to make Civil cards undercover due to surveillance and sensitive paperwork being served, which is about $12,000. This is in lieu of asking for new non-specific standard vehicles for Civil. Detectives increased $8,000 due to non-cap requests. They're asking for two office cubicles, which is about $5,300. And then travel and training went up $6,900. Records increased 24, $2,450 due to travel and training. Dive Team increased $2,500 due to travel and training. And then vessel increased $3,500 due to non-cap portable radios and body cameras and travel and training. Happen increased $46,000 due to non-capital equipment. We're asking for a $10,000 evidence freezer, and then, I'm sorry. Non-capital equipment increased $10,374. We're asking for an evidence freezer, which is a little over $2,000, and evidence fencing, which is $8,275. Our ILET, Idaho Law Enforcement Telecommunication System, increased $23,000. This will reflect the actual charges that we pay each year. And then telephone costs increased $5,000 to align with spending trends. And also our admin travel and training increased $10,000. Patrol increased $61,000. Weapons and Self-Defense increased $49,000 due to 50 crowd control kits. And then our ammo and gun supplies increased $25,000. Our ammo and gun supplies, equipment request stayed the same. However, last year in 2025, we reduced it right before we came in front of you guys for our budget by $20,000 when we were trying to make budget cuts. We are asking for our subscription-based software increased $24,000. This is the ALPR Service Agreement. I think right now we're on a one-year, so if you guys approve it again, then it will be to $24,000 for next year.
I have a question on that. Do we have any data for that at this point? That was one of the big contingencies for the Board to agree to that, is to have data that shows that it's actually making a difference in the community?
We caught a murder suspect on this data just a few days ago.
Okay, so that's a story, but do you have like a report that says this is what?
We weren't able to use it until several months and get people trained up. So what kind of measurables can we expect within a couple of months, period of time?
When do you think you'll have something?
Well, I'd like to at least get six months, six months of it.
So when is that?
Third quarter of the year.
All right, thanks.
But certainly a murder suspect is off the street here in Cootney County because of ALPR.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, again, it's just, that was part of the whole, I mean...
We weren't able to really get the full period of time.
Sheriff? I'm speaking right now. The contingency for this was to provide a report that said, "Give us an opportunity to use this, and we will show you what it can do in the community." So, it's numbers, that's all, just numbers. I know that it has worked because I've heard other stories, but the aggregate numbers is really part of the whole process of saying, "Give me the resources, and in exchange, I will show you what this will do for the community." That was the whole purpose of it a year ago, because it was a very contentious issue, as you may recall.
It became a political issue, yes.
Yeah, so...
We certainly will be compiling that data. It did take time to get people trained up, but it's a very, very effective tool, and we will provide that...
September, October timeframe?
Can we do a 90-day measureable?
Just when you think you have the numbers that make, you know, that show it, that'd be great. So, thanks.
Okay, for Patrol, non-cap equipment, an increase of $15,000. We're asking for an RCON adaptive training suit, which is $3,000. RCON training mats, $4,500, and then a Glock-linked firing training pistol, $5,000. And then Patrol's travel and training increased by $13,000. SWAT increased $8,468 due to uniforms. They're asking for $4,000 to outfit members with cold weather gear. And then $9,000 increase in vehicle maintenance to replace the Bearcat tires. Maintenance increased by $107,000 due to non-cap requests. $15,560 for a powder coat oven. $8,000 for a mower. $9,100 for asking for two D iceers, and then a snow file for $8,000. The building repair and maintenance sign of 8517 increased $83,000 due to maintenance now overseeing the jail, KC North, the KCSO main campus, 911, and OEM. Jail increased budget by $1,634,313. The majority of this increase came from the following. Medication, $200,000 increased due to current spending trend, and then the type of inmate population that we're currently housing. The cost is also included, or this cost is also included in the, not included in the current medical service contract that we have with WellPAP. Contracted food services increased $51,000. Summit Food Service has advised us that an increase of 5% will go into effect in FY26. Contracted medical service, $1.3 million. This line item pays for the contracted amount for our in-house jail, medical mental health care services provided by our contract provider. This figure aligns us with the current WellPAP contract cost and covers this year's increase. Housing supplies, $45,000. This is all costs associated with housing and inmate supplies. We are currently at 90% spend. Hospital and other healthcare pros increased $40,000. This line is for the off-site inmate medical provider visit. This increases due to current spending trend, and this cost is also not included in the current medical services contract. Uniforms increased by $6,500 due to new higher jumpsuit allowance and jumpsuit replacement program. Our jail detention response team increased by $17,000. In weapons and self-defense, we are asking for 10 Avon C50 gas masks, which totals $9,000. A Genesis 12 shotgun for $3,000, and then the travel and training increased by $6,000. Going into capital requests for E911, their request, which is an restricted fund, they're requesting a Ford Expedition that they want to split with the actual county 911 fund for a total of, it's $47,900 out of each fund. The current 911 director vehicle has 88,000 miles on it, and it is at its threshold for replacement. Requested vehicle is a four-wheel-drive vehicle that will allow the transported crew members and equipment to tower sites, a requirement for the use of enhanced funds to help fund this purchase. The vehicle will also act as a backup for the radio system and administrators in the event their vehicle is not available. E911 is also asking for the MICA Peak battery plant replacement for $50,000. The battery bank at MICA Communications Site is original to the site that was installed in 2009, 2010. Some of the cells were replaced in 2017, but not all. This has lowered the length of running time. The battery bank will keep site running without commercial or generator power. The uptime on the bank is now lower than a reasonable amount of time for personnel to travel to the site and potentially resolve issues before the site is lost in power outage. These project goals are to replace the aging batteries before failure is seen and to increase the battery bank capacity to a more acceptable battery bank runtime for the critical communication site. And that's going to be the same for the Mason-Bute battery replacement. In 911, the capital request they have is a Ford Expedition, which I had stated will be split with enhanced 911. Detectives is asking for two vehicles for $108,000. One would be for the SIU detective position, if approved. And the other, during the fleet management meeting, initially maintenance was asking for a maintenance replacement truck, but during the fleet management meeting, it was decided that detectives would pass down a truck that they can't use to maintenance and then ask for a new car in this year's budget. For Auto Shop, we are asking for a fleet management software, which is $20,000. This software will provide efficient, accurate, and better asset control in our auto shop. Search and Rescue, we'd like to purchase land that is west of our Search and Rescue grounds for $160,000. The team is currently out of space with the current shop with the amount of vehicles, trailers, and equipment we have. The 25,000 square foot lot to the west will give the needed room to grow and space for a future shop to be built. Snowmobile, the Skidoo Summit, which is a total of $17,000, but we'd like $12,500 to come out of the county-funded fund, and then $4,500 will come out of the restricted snowmobile fund that we get from revenue. Currently, the backcountry unit has two snowmobiles that were purchased in 2010 and are having significant maintenance issues. For sonar ROV, which is a vessel dedicated fund, we're asking for $48,998. The current ROV is no longer serviceable and needs to be replaced. This unit will allow sonar to continue recovering bodies and evidence throughout the year. For OHB, we're asking for a UTV, $36,000, which is OHB dedicated funds. Older equipment is causing higher maintenance and associated costs. The unit will ensure the deputies have reliable response vehicles and can pass the older machines to the growing volunteer search and rescue unit. For Patrol, we're asking for a Skydio drone, which is $29,000. We're facing a very likely FFA ban on all Chinese drones. All current KCSO operating drones are Chinese, and this will leave us without very valuable tool that is used on almost a daily basis. Currently, KCSO has six deployable drones. If this ban takes place, we will only have the current requested drone available. Also for Patrol, we're asking for 10 Patrol vehicles, and one is a K9, for a total of $964,000. We have one over 100,000 miles and three that are projected to be over 100,000 by this time next year. We also have a K9 vehicle at 85,000 miles that will be over in mileage by next year. These are all fleet management approved. Admin, we're asking for a voice stress analyst, which is $11,000, to assist with quick and efficient results and turnaround time for lie detection during the KCSO background process. The system has an error rate of less than 0.5% and can be administered within minutes of completing background review. Saves weeks of scheduling and costs for polygraphs. We're asking for an ARC GIS Migration Network Analyst, $14,688. An ARC GIS Pro, this is a replacement for the end-of-life ARC map that we are currently using, and for the one that we're currently using, not support will discontinue in March of 2026. We're asking for a Recruiting Sergeant vehicle, $93,000. This vehicle will provide for towing and equipment transport to recruiting and PR events. This vehicle will not have a patrol cage, camera, or radar system, thus reducing the cost. Overall build is the same cost as the current Patrol car. For Animal Control, we're asking for a truck, $58,000. Currently, we have an animal control truck that is currently over 120,000 miles. For Maintenance, we're asking for a forklift, $18,000, and this is to replace a failing forklift acquired from building and grounds approximately six years ago. It has charging, starter, and other miscellaneous issues. We're asking for a man lift, $12,500, needed to access hard-to-reach areas at the jail, i.e. day rooms and tight areas within the facility. We're asking for an exterior garage for the SWAT and maintenance departments, $56,000. For the SWAT garage, it is for the insulation and heating for the buildings so we can house less than lethal rounds, chemicals, and explosives, as well as sensitive electronics in a climate-controlled environment. Two of the bays will be for maintenance-related equipment, parts, and supplies to maintain the building and property. We're asking for a marine safety divider wall, $113,000, which will provide the required safety separations between the main floor and bays. This would alleviate the need for hand railing and reduce the cost to heat the area. Currently, ICRIMP is asking that we put handrails in that area. And so the maintenance department has thought, if we put the wall up, then it'll also save us on heating and cooling in that area. For jail, we're asking for jail unit one match, which is $28,000. This will provide the ability to lock dangerous inmates inside the shower area and tablet area of the APOD dayroom. This will minimize, minimize, sorry, this will minimize staff's exposure to violent inmates, and deputies will be able to restrain high-max inmates from secured positions and control their movement during out times. The jail is also asking for a food cutter, $14,000. This cutter will replace an old and worn-out cutter. In addition, it would allow the kitchen to continue preparing daily meals efficiently. Once the jail has completed its expansion, an additional 300 meals per day will be added to the daily meal count. The jail is also asking for a vacuum sealer, $17,000. This machine will be used to vacuum and seal all inmate property, including winter coats and boots, into one property bag. The machine will deplete the air out of the bag and provide a seal so the property can be compacted for storage. This was a 2025 budget request, but we cut it. Property room conveyor system, $71,000. Our current property storage system will not support an additional 104-bed inmate facility. This conveyor system will turn our property room into a dry cleaner-type storage rack with a moving conveyor system where inmate property bags can be stored. This was also a 2025 budget request that was cut. Lastly, for the jail, we're asking for a mail secure, $55,000. The Ray Secure Mail Secure Scanner would allow our deputies and clerks to scan the legal mail without opening it. The mail secure system will scan and detect liquid and powder forms of illicit drugs on all incoming mail. The safety of our inmate population and the deputies and clerks who handle mail would greatly benefit. Moving on to our new program request, Patrol is asking for a LEO web program, $8,250. This program assists deputies by removing their private information from the internet. We have experienced recent examples locally where an officer involved in internet receiving death threats via email, mail, email, telephone, and their residence offer information being located online. This program will keep our deputies safer. Cootney County spent a large amount of money on an overtime detail due to threats being made to them. Other LE agencies are providing this to their employees. This was also a 2025 budget request that was cut. The briefing room training, $4,192. This is a briefing, this is briefing topics laid out by LE professionals on case law topics affecting law enforcement. These trainings help to build exemplary officers who reduce liability and maintain public trust. The following is onboarding, if positions are approved, onboarding for new Hayden Lieutenant, $94,756 for a vehicle. Onboarding for four new Patrol deputies, $501,000 for vehicles. And onboarding for Communications Coordinator for training is $4,626. Moving on to our five-year plan, which I don't really know how to explain what that is. If Randy can elaborate.
So before I started at the county, there's a five-year plan budget established for the Sheriff's Office to use. The best understanding I can gather from, since my time at the county, is that it was for maintenance and upkeep of the jail. Since that time, the Commissioners have seemed open to also using that fund balance to fund other critical maintenance and upkeep items at Sheriff facilities. And so I had the Sheriff's Office budget only capital projects in this budget that were vital maintenance and upkeep-type projects, not necessarily things that might be considered nice to have. And obviously, that is a little bit of judgment depending on who's reading through the material. But that is what we are trying to use this five-year plan for, similar to what Facilities uses their five-year plan budget for.
Thank you. So based off of that, we are asking for the gel slider, or the PSB slider replacement, $56,000. Replace failing end-of-life equipment with new repairable equipment. We're asking for, at the KC North... We're asking for, at the KC North building, we need the employee parking lot redone, which is $22,000. It's cracked, it needs to be resurfaced to prevent safety and liability issues. Same for the patrol parking lot, which is $78,000. And then we're asking for a patrol sidewalk, which is $49,000. The sidewalk will be to access the training room, west exterior door, without constantly walking through admin and allow access to patrol vehicles. Currently, we are walking on gravel and grass, which could potentially be dangerous during the winter months. We're asking for the phase-two electrical panel work at KC North, which is $19,950. This is to continue correcting electrical issues at KCSO North that were done incorrectly or out of compliance. We're asking that the KC North public parking lot also be redone for $19,000. We're asking for safety window tent at KC North, $97,000. Instead of replacing windows and framing with ballistic glass, we would like to use bullet-resistant tents on all exterior windows at KC North. We're asking for a jail Harding's intercom, $115,000. This intercom system is needed to replace the intercom system in unit one and unit two due to aging equipment failure. This will assist the tower in listening to the inmates clearly and understanding conversations with them in the pods. Lastly, we're asking for the jail admin water heater replacement, $13,989. This water heater is 10-plus years old and is failing and needs to be replaced. Those are the increases to our A, B, and C budgets.
Did you have anything else that you'd like to add?
No.
No? Are there any questions up here?
I have, yes, several.
Okay.
Did you want, anybody want to go first, or?
You can go first.
Okay. So if we can start over on page one. The four new deputies, I know that we're working with HR to figure out why new positions were approved but not backfilled. But I only have three. That would have been Timberlake, Twin Lakes, and Lakeland, maybe?
Kevin Smart for the record. Yeah, Commissioner, we've been looking into that deeper. And yes, it was the Twin Lakes one, the Timberlake, Timberlake High School, the Twin Lakes one, and then the Hayden SRO position that we're wrestling out this year to do the contract ourselves with the school district. It will no longer be part of the Hayden contract. So those would be the three, yes, the four. So, you know, I'm under sheriff's permission. I think we can cut that back to three right now, that those were the three that were missing. The others, we were able to work our way through the whole process, link them back and forth, and it looks like they have been covered.
Okay. Uh, let's see. And then as we go through the different A, B, and C budgets, I'll have more discussion then, but I'm trying to. Your new communications coordinator, you had been using lieutenants in the past. Do you have lieutenants with specialty that can do this? Or you're just all out of specialty?
Yes, we have.
You want to hit, you want to hit them, but there you go.
Thank you. We do have lieutenants who are doing it right now. I'm doing it currently. However, the problem is that we have primary duties of keeping the engine running and keeping different divisions going. And we're getting more and more media requests, and more things are happening, which is requiring a substantial amount of my time, along with the other lieutenants who have been helping me out, to get press releases out, answer questions to the media, and things like that. So we're just asking for a civilian position that is more well-versed in this field.
Well, they have to go through the same background that all civil employees do, civilian employees.
To have access to sensitive information. So I think I'm safe in saying yes.
Additionally, Commissioner, as I may add, under Sheriff Brett Nelson for the record, this person would be very savvy with regards to social media. We've recently learned through our own endeavors the lack of fully understanding how and the ways in which the various social media platforms run and how information can and can't be dispersed.
As far as the interpreters stipend, are all of those 10 deputies certified as interpreters? Because they'll need to have a certificate if we're gonna pay more.
That's for the initial stages of starting the program. We have 10 employees that speak flu, natives, their native language, one being Russian, the rest being Spanish. With the approval of, through HR, we would establish some type of basic.
Certification.
Ability to speak that language. Currently, they're utilizing that talent on a daily basis to carry out operations.
I understand that patrol is going to be full this summer. So we need a full-time sergeant for recruiting?
I'm not understanding your question.
So if we're full, why do we need a full-time sergeant for recruiting?
Well, look, I'll ask, the question was, commissioners and HR asked us to provide a full-time position for recruiting. The reality is, we don't have a spare sergeant to solely dedicate to just a recruiting process. Obviously, with the expansion of the jail the next year, depending on when it ends, we're gonna have to fully ramp up our efforts on a full-time basis to fulfill those vacancies. So with that, as Lieutenant Howard previously spoke to, we have people that are doing ancillary positions, but it's not fully dedicated where we need to enhance our abilities.
If I could add a little bit more to that. That was something that was discussed a year ago, when there were a lot more vacancies. But, you know, we have increased the pay to be more competitive. And so you've actually gotten a lot more applications as a result of that. And so it may, may not have the same need as we looked at about a year ago when we talked about something like that. Is that something that you would at least conceptually agree to?
Yes, and I agree. This time last year, we had nearly 60 openings within the sheriff's office. And I believe we're down somewhere around 30 at this time. And as Commissioner Duncan spoke to, as we speak right now, we're within one or two positions of being fully staffed, at least on paper, with people yet to start and transition over from the jail, being fully staffed the first time in at least a decade. The jail, again, we're down from 30-some vacancies to, I believe, around 14. So the effort has been put forth, but yet, again, the request was made through our discussions that we should consider having a full-time recruiter.
And is there a reason why it has to be a sergeant and not a deputy?
Yes, ma'am, that was spoken both internally and within the group. The reality of having a sergeant is, we won't have people making promises they can't keep, having greater knowledge of the profession, the specific knowledge regarding to the job-specific duties, so that we entail our new applicants are getting true value and true information as to what they're applying for and not being sold some goods that's not there.
On the detectives, the ICAC detective, I know there's some type of connection to the AG's office. Is the AG's office supporting that for Cootney County?
Well, it would be a detective assigned to sex crimes here in Cootney County, not necessarily assigned to ICAC. So it would be more specific to victims here in Cootney County. Whereas generally, once you assign it to ICAC, you don't really have any say-so of what that detective does. So we're an ICAC affiliate, but this detective would be right here in Cootney County.
Okay, and then were we offered an ICAC position before?
Well, they've offered them in the past, yes. But as of right now, Cootney County Sheriff's Office, we do not have an ICAC detective, no. But we weren't necessarily in a position either, whereas now we are getting into being able to, to be able to concentrate on sex crimes here in Cootney County.
As far as maintenance go, I know that you're wanting to hire two maintenance operators, but if they're very difficult to fill positions, can we make sure that we get all of them filled prior to having two additional? Because that's just gonna leave more openings not getting filled.
In speaking with Tom, who expressed the request, again, the definitive workflow is far there. Between nine campuses, I believe it's a total of nine campuses, they're running to try to keep up on a daily basis. Yes, there is the need to add the two spots but to fill. That, too, is another position that we continuously recruit and advertise for. It's a mere fact of trying to get the applicants in through the background process.
How, all right, sorry, down to B budget increases. How often does civil need to have a plain wrap vehicle? And is there no opportunity to use a detective car?
I'll have Captain Deek speak to the specific request in which section he oversees.
Morning, Commissioner. Our civil deputies are tasked with, obviously, going out into the community to serve various requests from the court. And identifying as a police officer often puts people in situations. There could be a situation of jeopardy where the officer's safety is an issue. And also, going to somebody's employment to serve paperwork, they're often willing to meet us as long as their boss knows that they're not getting served by a cop to show up in court. It's to avoid that penalty for the person that they're serving as well. The wrap on the car would eliminate that. Here comes a cop. They dress in plain clothes most of the time, but the vehicle itself identifies, it screams law enforcement.
Okay, thank you. On the vessels, the body cameras, is that replacement? That seems an awful lot. And are they connected to the cars? Are we getting new cars in vessel? What, how, how does that work?
I think from what I can remember, I think that's to replace two or three body cameras. They've just kind of been, they did two or three last year. And so like every year, they're just trying to replace old cameras, but the total is $9,000, which each one, I believe they're, I believe they're over $4,000 for one now. So it must be two.
Okay, and then is that property tax? Or is that the actual vessel funds?
I think it's property tax.
Next page. The fleet management software, is there an ongoing cost? $20,000 to start, $12,000 for yearly?
Commissioner Duncan, I just wanted to clarify. The radios and body cameras in vessel are funded with vessel funds, not property tax.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, and will any computers or anything need to be upgraded? Or that's just the software that can go in there?
Cloud-based, yeah.
Okay, cloud-based. And so again, it's $20,000 to start, and then $12,000 a year after that. Okay. And, let's see, the search and rescue, that may, that was the old price. We're gonna have to get a new appraisal on that, or updated appraisal. So we'll have to look at that. Brandy, is that $160,000 still property tax in the budget? Or is that fund balance?
I believe it's property tax. If it's in the rec safety budget.
Search and rescue.
Search and rescue.
Okay.
Give me one second, because it's actually on our CapEx summary. Right now, it's being funded with property tax.
Okay.
But you can always, that's part of what we'll discuss at the meeting tomorrow, is you can always use fund balance.
Okay.
And the $160,000 is in the appraisal, the same one that the board just used a month or so ago to purchase the Parks and Water way.
And that was the end of it. That was the six months. It's only good for six months, so. But I don't think it'll be a big deal to get it updated and find out the new questions, so. Anytime you want me to stop, because I have.
Go ahead and run through your questions.
Because I know we have a time limit here, so I don't want to use up the whole thing.
Well, I just have a couple of simple questions. There's no summary in here of what the asks are for the A, B, and C budget, so I'd be curious what that is. And then I'd just like to know what the percent increase is for this budget versus the previous year, the ask.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
Do we have a summary of what the ask is for the A budget, the B budget, and the C budget?
You mean like a total dollar?
Yeah, like I have this document here, but there's no like summary for A, what the total is.
Looking at the Word document from the sheriff?
Uh, yes.
Or the Excel document for me? Okay, so I bet that they could just go through and add it to their Word document to add it up and give it to you. But just looking at the personnel summary right now, I'll just go through and add them all up. So the sheriff's requests for new positions and then the certificate pay for interpreters, or bilingual, whatever, is 1.4 million dollars. And then we'll add in the request to reclass the purchasing agent and longevity pay. That brings total personnel requests to 1.5 million, and that does not include onboarding costs.
That was A budget?
That was A budget.
Okay.
B budget, I'm not gonna be able to give you something off the top of my head. That is, take a lot more time. C budget, that's on the CapEx summary. And if I add all of those up, and including the five-year plan and the 10 cars, it looks like that is 2.59 million, almost 2.6 million in capital.
And then, in the past, you have broken it out by elected official.
I do have that summary. That's part of what I printed and gave the board at my budget kickoff. And it's also posted on your drive. So I can open that right now, and.
And that would give you the overall overall?
Oh, true. So if we look at that, at the sheriff's line, like I said, A budget requests are 1.5 million. B budget increases over the FY '25 adopted is 1.2 million. New programs is 612,000. Capital requests, I have, oh, this is not including their five, not including five-year plan, is 1.1 million. D budget, which is leases, is 20,000. So total sheriff increases requests is 4.5 million. So that's on the requests per elected official summary that I have.
You said 4.5 million?
Yes.
Because I have 1.5 for A, 1.2 for B, and 2.59 for C.
Because your C budget is including their five-year plan, and technically, in the system, the five-year plan is under the board.
Okay.
So if I'm going just off, my formulas are keying off of the elected official.
Well, then A and B would be 2.7 million, based upon these.
Yeah, so if I'm not including the five-year plan, A and B is 2.7 million.
But if you include it, it should be 5.3 million.
Yeah, it would be higher by whatever the five-year plan amount is. I might, I can maybe make that update next time I update the summaries. I'll think about it.
Okay.
Commissioner Everly, did you have any questions?
Hope you got them all taken care of.
Okay.
So I don't really want to finish all of this. So I'll just finish this page, if that's okay, and then.
And then the only other one was just the percent increase over last year.
I don't have that, so I'll have to work on that and get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
So two more questions, and then I'll save my questions for some other time. Under maintenance, on page, I guess I'm still on page two, there is a man lift for 12,500 to access hard area, to reach in the jail. We approved one several years ago. Was that purchased? We approved one several years ago, was that purchased?
Yes.
Push the button. Thank you.
Tom Reed for the record, yeah, we got a two-person man lift, and the one that we had for the jail was a single man, and that one is no longer usable. We've had that one for twenty-plus years, so that's what we're asking for.
Okay, you completely lost me. Just a couple of years ago, we approved.
A two-man lift.
Okay, so two man.
Yeah, this is a single man, which allows us to get into the pods around the tables.
Okay, so it's smaller?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a single, single-person lift.
Okay, then the marine safety divider wall, it kind of sounded like maybe a few hundred dollars to fix the ICAC thing, but you guys want a hundred and thirteen thousand to make that separation?
Because they're eventually gonna want a classroom, that whole dividing wall from the admin section to the auto shop, between the marine bays and the marine platform would be walled off with access to those in lieu of putting up.
Handrails?
Which would be, yeah, ten to fifteen grand to do that.
Okay, so, so they want another training room, which this will accomplish with this hundred and thirteen thousand?
No, that will not. The total was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand with a training room, and I separated that out at the sheriff's request, or the sheriff's department request, to separate that so that that could be something that could possibly be done later. But this would divide the platform with the bays and then also split the HVAC that's gonna save, because right now, they're just pumping.
Right.
Heating and cooling in there.
Yep. Okay, I'll stop now.
Any other questions?
Yes, but for a later time.
All right, thank you. Public comment. Hearing none, eleven fifty-three, meeting adjourned.